I'm gonna go ahead in respect for everyone's time, I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting since we are thirty minutes behind. At this time, I would like to call the May twenty first, twenty twenty meeting session at six fifty-six.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we go into open session at six fifty-six P M.
All right. Any discussion? Vice President Reagan. Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Yay.
Chair votes aye, Director Brooks.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero to go into open session. At this time, the chair. Director Watery.
All right, got you, it's okay.
At this time, the chair is seeking a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Madam Chairman, I ask that we adopt the agenda as printed.
A second.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watery.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Graves. Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Yay.
Director Graves. Chair votes aye, motion to carry, uh, chair votes aye, motion carries six to zero to adopt the agenda. Moving on to the next item. First of all, before we start, audience comments, I would like to thank everyone for being so patient with the board. All right. Has everyone had an opportunity to approve, review the minutes from the May? From April sixteenth, regular session minutes?
Yes ma'am.
All right, is there any discussion about these minutes? Right. At this time, the chair is seeking a motion to approve the April sixteenth, twenty twenty regular session minutes.
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairperson, I has asked that the board please approve the Thursday, May twenty first, twenty twenty, six thirty P M minutes. And April sixteen, regular session minutes.
Second.
I want to be very clear, the only minutes that we are approving are the April sixteen, twenty twenty regular session minutes. That's just a date up there.
Okay.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watery.
Aye.
Director Graves. Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Yay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero. All right, at this time, we're moving on to business and finance, Dr. Skinner.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Is there no audience comment?
No, not for closed session.
Thank you.
This is Ms. Welty, um, I, this should have been under the consent items, I'm not sure why. This is here.
We going to go forward?
It is under consent items, this is the only consent item.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, all right, Shelley, what do we have?
These are the April twenty twenty bills to be approved.
All right. Have board member, have you had an opportunity to review the bills for April? Cause I have. All right.
I have your, I have president.
Somebody's echoing.
All right, if the, at this time, the chair is seeking a motion to adopt the April twenty twenty bills.
I still move.
A second.
Any discussion? Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watery.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Yay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero. At this time, we're moving on to the finance report.
This is the financial report as of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty. You'll see the total revenues are still budgeted at ninety million five. We received in three point eight million in April. Year to date, we've received in seventy million seven, and with the remaining nineteen million eight to be received. We've received in seventy-eight point one percent of our revenue. Last year, we had received in eighty point nine percent. The expenses, we have a working budget of eighty-five million. We paid out four point nine in April. Year to date, we've spent sixty-three point nine million. Remaining budget to be spent is twenty-one million one, a percent of the, paid at seventy-five percent. Compared to seventy-four point one in April.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Welty, can someone please mute their phone? I think it's you, Vice President Reagan, can you please mute your phone? Thank you.
There were no budget revisions for the month of April. So you'll see, these are just the changes that we've made, that were additions to the budget, and that has not changed. So these, this is the TIF education fund invoice that we submitted, and it was approved by the commission Thursday. So we should be receiving that check. If you'll scroll down, Donna. Keep going. So the February invoice of four hundred and fifty-two thousand was approved, so we will be receiving that check here shortly. So next page, and then this is the fund balance projection. You'll see we're at a, setting at a fourteen point six-two percent at the end of nineteen twenty, and right now, I'm projecting an eighteen. I can't see behind the, there just eighteen point two nine six at the end of the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one school year. Now, these numbers are still just preliminary, I'm still working on inputting the budget. So those are the financials for April, does anyone have any questions for me?
I have a question.
Okay.
Does that fund balance reflect current expenditures, such like the playground? That was approved a few months ago, or is that just the prediction from the beginning of the school year?
That includes the playground, and those numbers were added when the playground was approved, so I added those to the budget. So that fourteen point, and what is it, I can't, I don't see it in front of me anymore, but the nine, I think it was fourteen point six. Does include the playground.
Awesome, thank you.
Madam President, I have a question of Ms. Welty.
Yes.
Ms. Welty, with this drawdown on that six million, what do you, can you tell us what the balance is?
Um, you can go back, Donna, to the PowerPoint.
But the balance.
I want to say it's at the very end, the very last page of that invoice.
I'd look for it, I do.
Okay, go back up one more. So, total invoice is, for all three invoices, is eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six thirty-two, which leaves five point one one two million that we can still draw down on. At this time.
Okay.
Will six hundred and fifty thousand in the eats fund that we can draw against.
Other question, if I may, Madam President, is that we have received from the county clearance on, I mean, from, based on the challenges for the assessment?
I'm sorry.
The assessment department.
Have, have, we.
I get, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question.
Mr. Brooks is, uh.
Okay, I'm back, my computer goes in, I have received from the county, and due to the, on the assessment.
Are you talking about the disputed taxes, is that what you're talking about, I'm sorry?
Yes ma'am.
I have not heard anything on that, I know that, that came through early March, I want to say, and they, they had ninety days to actually file suit, so I'm hoping to hear something here within the next month, on whether we'll be getting that money or not.
No, have they, that projection as to how much money that will be?
It's two point three million, that was disputed.
Devils? It was disputed?
Yes, two point three million nine, I want to say, excuse me, that was disputed. So.
And so with that being said, Shelley, what did we project to receive again?
The.
From this, from the taxes.
I'd have to go back and look at my, the budget. I don't have that in front of me.
Can you get me?
I'm sorry, my computer goes in.
Yeah, I. So you want the total that we budgeted for?
Yes.
Okay.
Against the petition amount.
Okay. I can get that for you, I don't have it right in front of me, for the total of what was budgeted. I do know that we took out one point six million based on budgeting for prior year and not with the large increase, so that still leaves us about three, or seven hundred thousand dollars that we were expecting but wasn't budgeted for, does that make sense? So.
No, can you repeat that for me?
Okay, so.
Write it down to say.
I didn't, I didn't budget for the entire revenue that was expected, I took out one point six because that was the difference between what we received in eighteen nineteen and what we were expecting nineteen twenty, and the board voted to approve that, so that's still at least seven hundred thousand dollars. That would be a hit to the budget because I did not take out the whole two point three million that we have in protested taxes.
Okay, now, I do have another question.
Okay.
So you're, so you're saying that we didn't, why didn't we take out the two point million dollars of protesting taxes?
I wouldn't have known what that was until March, so when the, the budget was built, I didn't know there'd be two point three million in protested. We were assuming there would be some, that's why we didn't budget for that one point six million.
Right.
Just leaving it basically the same as what we had in eighteen nineteen, even though we knew we had that large increase in assessed value. We knew we weren't going to receive all of it. So, a majority of that was not budgeted for, but not all of that, so there's still seven hundred thousand dollars that would be a hit to our revenue.
To our twenty twenty-one budget?
To our nineteen twenty budget.
So, so, okay, so our end of year budget could have a deficit of seven hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, depending on what happens with these protested taxes.
That's a, that's a percentage, how would that affect our fund balance?
It's a percent in fund balance. But if we don't spend all the money, then it, it's, it's just kind of hard to really say, you know, with not having to pay out all the bus and not having to pay out a lot of our contracted services, so.
It could potentially balance out.
It could potentially, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Brooks, go ahead.
Ms. Welty, what, what year are we into this six million dollars that we've been drawing down, what year?
It was approved, the final TIF was approved in two thousand seventeen, so I think we're getting ready to go into our third year of receiving eats funds.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mrs. Welty, just to get back off of President Briggs. First of all, when you get that information, could you send it out to the, to all the board? First thing, then the second thing, you said something about two point six billion, we was not looking go back over there, because I, I heard you say we wasn't looking for, and then you said something about one point something billion, and then you said something, seven hundred thousand, so give me those numbers again.
So, last year, we had that very large increase in assessed value, which was made our revenue look like it was a lot more than we were going to receive. So we knew that more than likely, we wouldn't receive all that money, so last fall, we came to the board and said, I don't want to budget for all of this revenue. So the board approved for me to leave the budget the same as it was in eighteen nineteen, which was basically one point six million less than what the assessed valuation said it should be. So, then we got in this February, a letter stating that we had two point three million in protested taxes. So instead of being a budget shortage of two point three, it's only seven hundred thousand because we already took out one point six of that, when we built the budget itself. So, and there's still a possibility we could receive the majority of this two point three, I just won't know that until June.
Okay, so you did say that you received this in March, so you had the notification of this in March, and you telling us about it, that's why I'm trying to follow you.
I brought this to the board every month since I've heard about it.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, okay.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I have one other question, Ms. Um, uh, the governor saying there's going to be a cut across the board. Are you hearing me, Ms. Welty?
You're cutting in and out, Mr. Brooks, I'm sorry.
The governor said that there's going to be a cut across the board, we could include, uh, desk, and, you know, do we have, are we prepared for that, based on what is ending?
We are definitely talking about how that can affect going forward. We are looking at especially the gambling money, so it'll probably hit our classroom trust fund, and it'll probably hit our proxy. He did have a meeting this week with superintendent's, um, basically stating that we would know hopefully by June first because he knew that we all had to have our budgets done, so we're still kind of in a holding pattern. We do know there will be cuts, we're just not quite sure where or how much.
Can everybody go out and start playing the lottery?
All right, thank you so much for that update, Shelley, so we definitely, Board of Education, need to keep a very close eye on the series of events that are going to impact our budget due to COVID nineteen.
Shelley, thank you.
Thank you.
You work on this.
All right.
Okay, are we ready for approval of bond language? First of all, I'd like to, and we're going to talk a little bit about the bond, we've got Justin Durham with us from Hollis and Miller, and also Joel Smith, our construction manager at RISC, for Universal Construction here as well. I will let Justin start, and he can talk about some of the, some of the bond stuff, and give us an up to date, and then we'll talk about the actual bond language. So Justin, go ahead.
All right, so I think we're pulling up the presentation here. First of all, thank you for having us tonight, I hope everybody's comfortable at home or at work or wherever you're at. I'm kind of getting used to these Zoom meetings, so kind of becoming the new normal, so first, tonight, we wanted to start with just a, just to rehash some of the, what we'll call planning criteria, or the major components that we've been discussing for the potential bond issue, so safety and security, HVAC, which is your heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, building infrastructure, so that's roofs, parking lots, nation repairs, it could be interior improvements like flooring, casework, ceilings, painting of the walls. And then we have discussed work at fine arts, so that could be work that we do in the Ruskin Theater, it could be, you know, orchestra, choir, band rooms, those kinds of spaces, and then we've discussed athletics, so as we went through the long range plan process, and we, you know, the architects and engineers, and Mr. Weekly and I walked the buildings, these were some of the topics that came up, they were presented throughout the process in our online surveys that we did, in our community forums, and these seem to be the major topics that kind of floated to the top over and over again. So that's, you know, and then as you look at those totals there, those go well beyond what we have for our thirty million dollar no tax increase bond issue that we're, we're kind of planning for. So we've had to prioritize a little bit. And last month, we did a community forum, and then I believe I updated the board, and then we've also had facility vision team meetings to go over, what we had were three different options. One was a very balanced approach, so that's the one that you see here in front of you. Two was very infrastructure heavy, so we focused a lot on, on roofs and HVAC, and then three was more interior focused. And as we went over and over, the comments were pretty overwhelming, that option one was the one that we were hearing that people wanted to continue with, so option one in a nutshell breaks down to, we're going to complete about one-third of the roof improvements that we identified. We will do about one-third of the HVAC and plumbing improvements that we had identified through the long range plan process. About half of our parking lots and sidewalks, half of those would be improved, and then we would complete all secure entries in every building throughout the district. Fine arts, we would focus on the Ruskin High School Theater. Athletics would be the gymnasium and the locker rooms at Ruskin High School. And then we would do interior improvements, exterior improvements, and then a potential of some playground improvements or playground turf. So those kind of where we started, and then if we go to the next slide, at our last F V T meeting, I know you guys won't be able to read this, it's probably very, very, very tiny on your screens, but what we did is we took a, an approach to figure out how we could balance those items out through every school within the district, and so one of the comments that we heard through the community forums, and even in some of our board meetings, was that we wanted to improve all schools as equally as possible, so that we do not have the haves and have nots around the district. So, this spreadsheet here that was presented at our last facility vision team meeting was just an opportunity to look at how each building, whether it be Burke, Compass, Dobbs, Irvin, Freedom, Markley, Ingalls, Santa Fe, Truman, Warford, Smith Hale, and Ruskin, and the individual improvements that those buildings would receive. And it's a good way to show that we have parity throughout the district. We did receive some comments that we would like to see some variations of this option, so we will be working on that. And then we will also be working with the principals in the coming weeks to go over the list for each of their buildings, and to really fine tune what these improvements could be. So by approving or kind of moving forward with option one, we have enough information to start to talk about what that bond language would be, because we do have those major improvement categories that we can cite in the bond language that would be on the ballot, so I'm happy to report that, that we're kind of moving forward in a very balanced approach, and we have a good bit of parity throughout the district, so with that, we can go to the next slide. And we wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about some of the options or the scenarios based on an August vote or a November vote, and so I worked with Joel and his team at Universal over the last couple of weeks, just to run some scenarios, and so we put some potential schedules together and budgets you guys, three different scenarios this evening to kind of look at, that might help you decide one way or the other, if you would still like to go in August, or if you would like to go in November. So, scenario number one is here in front of you, and that would be our vote in August, so just as we had planned. That would be no change to the available fund, so still thirty million dollar no tax increase, and we could do the projects in option one, or a variation of those, just as you saw. When the bond passes in August, we will start to design those projects very soon after that, that bond passes, and we will plan to complete some of the, the first round of projects in the summer of twenty twenty-one, so that summer of twenty twenty-one is the important date there. The design documents for the, about six point five million in projects that I think we'll try to accomplish in that year one, because we want to spread these projects out over three to four years, as we move through. We think it'll take us about five months to design that work. And that could be secure entries, interior improvements, restrooms, HVAC, we don't know exactly what that would be yet. We'll talk about priorities and how we want to knock things off year by year as we progress. But just know that we're planning on doing somewhere around six and a half million dollars of improvements of year one, and then it'll take us about five months to design that, so that means that plans will be ready for bidders sometime December, January of the coming months, and that is a very good time to put bids out for our subcontractors and contractors to get good competition, get good bids in, and then we have plenty of time to order materials and things like that after bids are approved for summer of twenty twenty-one work. So that's scenario number one, so if we move to scenario number two. So this would be if we decide to go in getting close, if we decide, can you there, there we go, so if we waited until November to go for our vote, I wanted to let you guys know that we would lose, we would potentially lose about nine hundred and fifty-six thousand to one point one two five million dollars in inflation fees, and I'll explain why. So, when the bond passes in November, Hollis and Miller will start designing the project just as we would in scenario one. But we believe that this will be to complete projects in the summer of twenty twenty-two. So we basically lose twelve months, and here's kind of how that breaks down. So the design documents will still take us about five months to complete, we're still looking at that same group of improvements, and that could be those in secure entries, interior improvements, whatever, just exactly like in scenario one. But the difference here is, is that plans won't be ready for bidders until March of twenty twenty-one, which we believe is too late to get out to contractors, receive good bids, get good bidder turnout. And then that also will, will have the ability to impact our ability to order long lead time items that we need for construction in the summer of twenty twenty-one, like rooftop units, glass, doors and hardware, light fixtures, things that can take, you know, six, eight, ten, sometimes twelve weeks to receive once they are ordered. So, that means that we will miss our construction window for twenty twenty-one, and those projects will have to be pushed. So by losing that year of work, we're, we're seeing about four and a quarter to five percent of an inflation hit every year, so prices go up four and a, four and a quarter to five percent every year. And based on that twenty-two and a half million dollars for hard costs is what we're seeing that we'll spend on actual hard costs for projects out of the thirty million dollar no tax increase. That translates to that nine hundred and fifty to about one point one million dollar loss of, of funds, so really quickly, just so you guys know, I, I know we're going for thirty million in no tax increase bond, but we always hold back about twenty-five percent when we're doing the planning phase to cover ourselves for soft costs. And soft costs, remember, guys, are your architect's fees, your construction management fees, your permitting fees through Kansas City, Missouri, and then we also hold back for contingency items, so things that are unforeseen, we like to hold back a little bit of money to pay for things that, that may come up during construction that we weren't necessarily planning for, because things do happen. So we want to be a little bit conservative at this point, and if we don't use those, those funds out of that twenty-five percent that we're holding back, then you guys will get that money back and can use it for additional projects later, so right now, we're kind of being conservative with, with how we're planning, so that is scenario two, does that make sense to everybody, any comments there? Okay, and then scenario three is very similar to two with one little bit of a twist. So if we did not want to lose those funds to inflation, what we could do is start design work in August, and that puts us back on scenario one's design and bidding and construction schedule. And that puts us back on scenario ones, design and bidding and construction schedule. But the district would need to start work at risk, which means that if you wait to vote in November and we start working on design and drawings and documentation in August, we would still need to be paid for those design fees, which would equate to about $270,000 of, of design fees over those months on that 6.5 million dollars. And we would have a little bit of fee for Universal and their team to do their pre-construction services earlier, and those fees would be at risk. So if the bond did not pass, those fees would still have to be paid. So that is scenario three. But scenario three also does allow us to be on track to complete work in 2021 with the November vote. It's just the district would be at risk for a little bit of funds and fee. Those are the three scenarios that I wanted to put out there for your guys' consideration on, you know, the timing of the bond issue and the impacts of, of going in August or November and then what that inflation piece could be. So just a review on our timeline here, here we are, we are in the very, very last line item that we had planned way, way back in December and January when we started this process. So here we are tonight, May 21st at 6:30 PM, and we are adopting the best plan. And so that was option number one that I went over with you guys. So we will adopt that plan tonight. Option one, if you guys so choose, and then we will work on those variations and those tweaks with the principals and, and with the Board of Education. I know we had some comments about some other projects that may take the place of, of some of the things on that list. So we are looking at those, we are tweaking those projects, and we'll come back to you with option one A, option one B, option one C sometime in the future that really starts to nail down and define exactly what we're going to do at every site. But right now with option number one, as you guys have seen, I think we have a, a very good path ahead of us and it's lined out. And the major components are identified. And so now it's just kind of making those final tweaks to, to get us going. So, and with that, that's my presentation for this evening. I'll be happy to answer those at this time.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, this is Ms. Graves. I was looking at, at a November date only because it hadn't gotten out to really promote the bond. And so my concern was, you know, if we went with August, would, would that be enough time? There's gonna have to be a media blitz to let people know.
Yes. And so that brings us to the next phase of, of what Hollis and Miller will help you guys with along with Universal Construction. So this was, this is kind of the end of our long range planning process, and this is where we would adopt that plan, move forward with bond language if you guys so choose. And then we start our bond campaign assistance. So that's the part where we will come in and help the district figure out how to get from basically today to that vote in August. And we will help you with that campaign piece. So we'll help you set up your campaign committees, your vote yes committee and your please vote committees. We can help you with bond collateral. So the posters that could go out in the public, the yard signs, the things that Ms. Marissa can put up on social media, whether that be Facebook or Instagram, Twitter, you guys name it, we will help you guys develop that, that graphic representation piece and help get the word out for the vote in August. So yes, that we do have time to do that, but we need to, if we're going to go in August, we do need to get started on that pretty quick. Yes.
So my question is, so if you got, I just want to make sure that there's no additional cost for the Board of Education for you guys to help promote this bond.
Yeah, so when we did our interview, when we were hired for the long range plan, we did tell you guys that it's normally like a 10 or $15,000 fee for us to do that, but we waived those fees for you guys this year. So we will do all of our bond support for the district at no cost. So any meetings that we come to, any graphic design that we do for you guys will all be free of charge. So yes, there will be zero cost to help you guys promote your bond issue from the Hollis and Miller side. That's correct.
And President Briggs, Joel from Universal Construction, our team along with LM2 Construction was the same way. We were, were willing to help at no cost to the district.
President Briggs.
Yes, Vice President Reagan.
Okay, I'm a little perplexed, maybe I can get unperplexed because we did have a meeting with you guys the other, about maybe two weeks ago. And I understand that we're trying to push it, and this is, you might as well say June. And this has been some of our fears about trying to promote a bond, but you cannot have, you don't have anybody there to promote it. And now we're trying to promote something in the night in it. With all that being said, I am kind of, I'm not understanding why we have not talked to these principals and got all that together on some type of rough draft. I'm not, I'm not understanding that. And then I'm not understanding just trying to rush something, but we have not gotten out to the community. And this is probably the first time the community is really hearing this as far as getting it out there. That's a roll of the dice.
I just want to make sure that every board member remembers we only have two minutes to speak.
Two minutes?
We have, yeah, we have a lot to cover tonight.
It's 20 minutes, but okay, anyhow, I just want to make sure, I mean, this is, this is kind of skeptical, I look at my other colleagues and this.
All right. At this time, what's the recommendation from the superintendent?
Dr. Skinner.
Go ahead, Dr. Skinner.
Dr. Weekly, okay, Dr. Weekly, go ahead.
Well, our recommendation, the ballot language, we have a board memo recommending, recommending to adopt the ballot language this evening for August vote. We work with bond counsel Gene Metz, Metzger of the Hardwood Law Firm. We had a bond campaign committee. Dr. Skinner, attorney Carla Fields Johnson, Shelley Wiltie, Lorenzo Boyd, Marissa Cleaver Wambaugh, myself met with Ms. Metzger, and we prepared the bond language. We all worked together to make sure the bond language is appropriate and legal. And we have that prepared for you tonight, and it's part of our package to, for you tonight. In addition, I want to read to you just how the bond language would appear on the ballot so you understand exactly what is being said. It says the shell, the Hippenbill School District of Jackson County, Missouri, without an estimated increase in the current debt service property tax levy, borrow money in the amount of $30 million and issue its general obligation bonds for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, repairing, furnishing and equipping school facilities, including, but not limited to repairing roofs, plumbing, heating and cooling systems, security entries or, yeah, security entries, playground, athletic, fine arts and parking facilities for certain existing school facilities throughout the district. If this proposition is approved, the adjusted debt service levy of the school district is estimated to remain at $1.10, which is the amount of the current school district levy per 100,000, per $100 assessed valuation of real and personal property. So that is the language that would be present on the ballot for voters to vote on.
Can you hear me yet?
Can you hear me yet?
You have to mute one of your, either the phone or the, because you're echoing.
Yes, Dr. Skinner.
Can't hear you, Dr. Skinner.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now? Okay, you can hear me, I can't hear you anymore. I'm, I'm having issues with the technology tonight. But I'll try to call back in so I can hear again. But yes, you know, this is something that, you know, we have been on track with. This is something that this is by many, many times, we brought this before the public. We've had public forums. This is right on target. We have talked to our principals, we have talked to everybody we need to. I did send something out to the board explaining why we believe that this is the best time. And, and to be honest, we are exactly where we need to be if we want to take this to the May 26th ballot language and put it on the ballot on the 26th to take it to an August vote. So again, I, I will have to say, I believe we have our best chance of getting this passed if we take it in August and not wait till November. We are dealing with a much smaller crowd of voters at that time, and we will have a vote yes committee, we'll also have a get out and vote committee. When we have a November ballot, where you have a presidential election, there are a lot of unknowns. So again, all I can say is the superintendent, we recommend that you approve the ballot or language to go for the 26th and the election to be held in August on the second.
At this time, the chair seeking a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I saw a motion that we go with option one that has been presented with us, ensuring that we get the bond on the August ballot by May 26th.
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion?
Real quick, President Briggs, I just wanted to hear from Mrs. Johnson, what do you recommend also?
Mr. Reagan, I just unmuted my phone to address. Another issue, but I, I don't have any basis for not, not agreeing with the recommendation of Hollis and Miller.
You are in the meeting now. There are more than 40.
I don't have any phones.
You, you have been put on hold by the host. You cannot.
Dr. Skinner, you can't hear us. So there we go.
I have no basis for not agreeing with the recommendation presented. They, the recommendation is sound, sound to me, and it's, I would recommend, I don't have any basis for not recommending what, agreeing with the superintendent's recommendation or Hollis and Miller's recommendation on this. I will say, Mr. Watry, what we need is a motion to approve the bond language as presented so that that can get placed on the ballot in August for the August election, I'm sorry, placed on the ballot in May for the August election. So your motion has to be to approve the bond language as presented.
Understood. I'm actually, so I asked to amend my motion to approve, and I motion to approve the bond language as printed.
Second, Ms. Graves, second.
Any further discussion? Vice President Reagan. Vice President Reagan. Director Watry. Director Graves. Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Chair, Chair votes, votes aye, motion carries seven to zero to adopt the bond language.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the three tier bus saving system for the 2021 school year. We have that in front of you. We've discussed that at the finance committee and the board. We've given the board several updates on area school districts as well. I just want to recant for the, for the board that this is a savings of 428,266 dollars that we will save each year. So, you know, e- every year we'll save 0.61% to the fund balance every single year that we do this. So that's a benefit to the district long term. Also, to, just to comment on the area school district, you'll notice the information we provided, one of the concerns was a nine o'clock start. As you will notice, all the school districts that we reported, every school district in the, in the area has nine o'clock elementary starts or even 9:15 to 9:05. The only district that did not was Center that has an 8:45. So we were right in line with our colleagues throughout the metro area. I, I know that was one of the concerns of, of a nine o'clock start. So I just want to make sure you understand that we're right in line with all other school districts across the city.
So this is your recommendation?
Yeah, our recommendation is to adopt the three tier bus schedule for 2021.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Watry.
Our motion that we adopt the three tier bus schedule for 2021.
Second.
Have a second discussion.
Second, Ms. Graves.
Let's see the time for high school again?
I'm sorry?
The high school start time?
In the scenario we've given you, our high school start time would be 7:30.
Vice President Reagan. Director Watry.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Reagan.
Vice President Reagan, no.
Oh, Vice President Reagan. Chair votes, aye, motion carries six to one.
Good evening, Board of Education. This is Katie Rowe, bringing to you the Election Day calendar request for change. After additional review of our 2021 approved district calendar, the executive leadership team would like to propose changing the Friday, November 13th Professional Development Day to Tuesday, November the 3rd. The reason that we're requesting the change is we want to provide flexibility for our staff to be able to participate in the November 3rd National Election Day. Additionally, many of our school sites are used as voting sites, therefore, we would like to minimize the amount of outside community members that may be in our school buildings during a regular school day. There's no cost to make this change, and the interim superintendent recommends the approval of changing the district calendar to make Tuesday, November 3rd a district professional development day with no students reporting.
It's time to chair seeking a motion.
So move, Madam President.
So second.
Vice President Reagan. Director Watry.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Yay.
Vice President Reagan.
No. No.
Chair votes, Chair votes, aye, motion carries six to one.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe.
Hi, good evening. This is Ms. Franklin, and the first that I am bringing forth is the Prep KC Memorandum of Understanding Renewal. The Prep KC Memorandum of Understanding is an annual agreement between Hickman Mills and Prep KC to provide curriculum development support for grades K through 12 and opportunities for college and career readiness for students and staff. Just a bit of the background information, Prep KC and Hickman Mills have been jointly committed to collectively implementing a set of strategies that will better prepare students for success in post-secondary education and the workplace. The set of strategies described below is designed to achieve the following outcomes during the 2021 school year. Increase students' academic outcomes through 40 days of technical assistance focused on academic support for teachers, coaches and building and district administrators. Increase post-secondary readiness for Smith Hale Middle School and Ruskin High School through college and career experiences. Provide technical assistance and support to expanding access to market value asset opportunities through Prep KC's career academies. And four, to connect industry professionals to district classrooms through the online connector platform. The cost summary is also included below. It outlines the specific supports to be provided by Prep KC during the 2021 school year. The total cost of the services is 156,638. However, with the cost sharing agreement that we have with Prep KC, Hickman Mills is responsible for a total of 82,446. That next section just really explains how this partnership with Prep KC is aligned to our five-year strategic plan. And then lastly, the recommendation is. And then lastly, the recommendation is for the interim superintendent recommends the renew, renewal of the Memorandum of Understanding with Prep KC for the two thousand and twenty-one school year.
At this time, the chair is seeking a motion.
Madam Chair, I saw a motion.
My second. My second.
All right, discussion?
Yes, this is Ms. Graves. I do have, uh, a question for Ms. Franklin. I don't have a problem, uh, can you hear me, Ms. Franklin?
Yes, I can.
I, I, um, I don't have a problem saying yes to this, but I do have a concern because I don't see the academic success of especially our elementary. And I, I really, you know, want them to know that, that the Board or a Board member is concerned about outcomes. I, I don't see, uh, growth, I, I don't, I don't see the outcomes for the money that we pay and for the services that, um, they are providing. I, I don't see that. I, I'm willing to approve this, but I, I want them to know that there's some concern, at least it is on my part, that they give them a lot of money. And I, I want to see some growth. I want to see some changes. And there have been some changes in certain areas. Uh, I think in the area of our primary elementary, I, I don't see that growth. I, I really don't. So that, that's just a concern of mine and that's just something I would like to share with them. Rather than that, I, I will go along with this.
And also, President Briggs, piggyback off, uh, Director Graves. I am also too worried about the outcomes of August curriculum that's here, depending on our money. Statistics are not showing anything moving. So I am very, very, very concerned. This is a lot of money that we're trying to give to our students. Trying to make sure that they are getting the quality education and that they're going to be benefiting. So I'm really skeptical about it and I'm just going to leave it at that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Watry.
Ms. Franklin, um, how do you, how, um, how have we measured, um, I'm, I'm trying to address the concern of my colleagues, uh, how, how do we measure our progress or, or address success with this program?
And so I do want to, to share that, you know, the work that we do with Prep KC is just one component of what we're doing to really address student achievement. And so in terms of the work that they've done with us, um, K-12, a vast majority of what they've done has really been to support college and career readiness for our secondary students. That is primarily what their services support in addition to benchmarking that we've used in our district for quite some time and really building capacity in teachers to really do the benchmarking work, create the assessments for students and make adjustments as needed. We too, um, do see that our elementary students, we still need to focus our attention on, um, our youngest learners, which is why we adopted a new curriculum just recently. And we also are partnering with Prep KC to really look at more opportunities to support elementary students and helping to prepare them for college and career readiness. And so we have adapted the services that Prep KC is providing to us each year to meet our needs, to better meet our needs. And so we, we are adjusting and really looking at additional ways to tailor that support to focus on all of our students and preparing even our elementary students for what's to come when they are, um, on their way to middle school or headed to, uh, onto high school. And so we are kind of moving those services down as much as possible so that those, the younger students are learning about those opportunities. And that, and honestly, right now, we're working with Prep KC to prepare for summer benchmarking where our district coaches are really partnering more closely with Prep KC to coordinate a lot of the support with our teachers. They've been doing that virtually, which is a big adjustment because typically we'd all be together for this professional development. So they've really been working with us to make sure that they can continue to provide the support even though we've had to transition to a virtual platform for professional development. So we do appreciate that as well.
Real quick, President Briggs, how many years have we, how many years have we been in this program? I mean, Ms. Franklin.
I can, so we have been working, um, with Prep KC since before I arrived, so at least five years. I believe it's probably six or seven years, but not necessarily the entire district. And so we've utilized components of benchmarking. We had several schools that were using components of it. It really wasn't a tight structure. Um, it wasn't a K-12 spectrum of services. And so, um, shortly after, um, my arrival to the district really started looking at how can we really expand the scope of the services? And I also just want to, um, to share that the services, they do evolve every year. And so as the state, um, adjusts the standards and expectations for students, Prep KC is adjusting, um, the professional development that they are providing. And I did share last year that a big part of what we're wanting to do and what we've been trying to do is really build the capacity in our staff so that we don't have to rely on so many services, which is what we're doing right now, which is why we have our coaches working so closely with Prep KC. So we can continue to modify the services and then we can provide a lot of that work ourselves. So we're just still in that transition process. But I will tell you, a lot of the services that are being provided at the secondary level, they are services that I don't know that we would have otherwise. Just they have a network of partnerships that we can tap into and, um, it's, it's really a unique opportunity for us to be able to provide those, those services to our students.
This is President Briggs. I, I have one question, I have one question. How many students, are we tracking the high school graduates that participate in Prep KC? And if so, how many students have transitioned to college and are the workforce that we've identified?
I don't have those numbers right at this moment in front of me. Specific numbers about students that participated in some of the services, but all of the students at the high school have some level of engagement with the work that Prep KC does because they do support our small learning communities. And so you, our students are interacting with those services and programs on a consistent basis. So even at the middle school level, so the career jumping, um, Mad City, Money, um, just different, different programs and opportunities that kids are engaged in. It's an ongoing, um, opportunity for the students, so it's not just specific students that are benefiting.
Madam President.
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Franklin, would you say that if we were, within your tenure, the last five years, would you say that you, we could possibly compare, um, the possible graduation rate uh, as a component of, uh, the, of the progress that Prep KC has done with us?
Yes, and I do, I think, you know, in addition to just looking at the graduation rate, we also want to look at the experiences that our students are being exposed to internships and some of those opportunities for them to be engaging in the workforce. So that's, that's important to include as well. Um, a lot of our students have had these opportunities to do internships, um, with companies that they would not have had otherwise. And we've built these relationships and, and partnerships over time so that in many instances, they want to work with students from Hickman Mills. And it, it is because we do have this long history and reputation of working with Prep KC and having such a good partnership with them. So, you know, I don't want to minimize that, yes, of course, the graduation rate is important, but it's really important that we make sure kids are prepared for the workforce. And a lot of our students are working, some students have in paid internship where they're actually being paid already. They've already started a partnership with Cerner and other companies so that they will leave, leave, uh, high school with employment already. And those are just kind of the, the partnerships that we really value, um, and experiences that are important for our students. And, you know, right now, uh, Ms. Rowe is and Dr. Skinner, they're all gearing up for this Real World Learning Grant, um, presentation. And so that's really exciting. And all of that is in relation to our partnership with Prep KC.
Yeah, 'cause I, I was going to say, um, last year about this time, um, Katie presented a very significant, um, gave a pretty significant presentation about all the programs, uh, that our students, uh, have came in. We've had students present, uh, as far as their internships, paid internships and things of that nature. I just wanted to, um, be able to kind of give, uh, more of a holistic view of what Prep KC does so that as we, uh, exit out of discussion and go into voting, that, uh, my colleagues have that information when making their decision.
Can you hear me now?
Madam, Madam President, I have, I have a question.
Yes, 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 Director.
Then, um, how many, how many students we have with Cerner? That's number one. And number two, what other districts in our area use the full, the services that we use, uh, from, uh, Prep KC?
So I'm going to have Ms. Rowe jump in so she can give you more specifics on that. Um, she obviously works more closely with the high school and so she has all that information she'll share.
So we had, um, good evening, Dr. Brooks. We have nine students this spring who, um, were over at Cerner doing an intern. Started with eleven in the fall semester and two decided not to apply for the internship this semester. Um, that's an increase from five last year. We can have, um, you know, up to fifteen spots. So we continue to think about ways to really promote the, the program, but really that's just a small percentage. Um, I really appreciate Ms. Franklin highlighting all of the college and career experiences that Prep KC provides for our students. Really, it's one of our bragging points in our Kaufman pitch and our grant is that we have so many great, um, academy experiences for our kids already through the Health Finance, Health Institute, um, for the Business and Finance, et cetera. Um, so that's been really nice to be able to brag on what we already have in comparison to some of our partner districts. In answer to your question of who's using the full scope of, of services, both Grandview and Center School Districts have similar MOUs to Prep KC and use both the academic component as well as the college and career readiness. Um, and then they have, Prep KC has some agreements with some of the charters, um, in individual schools within the Kansas City Public Schools. So on the, on the MOU, it, it does, on the second page, it does kind of outline the scope of services and the academic support for benchmarking is just a tiny percentage of the overall MOU that we're agreeing to. You'll see that the bulk of the services come from the support around college and career readiness.
Just the, the slots, number of slots with Cerner?
I, I'm sorry, I missed it, Mr. Brooks, Director Brooks.
Who says the number of slots for the internships?
Really, it's based on the capacity of both Cerner to be able to support enough students, um, in a given semester and then also based on teaching availability. So right now, there's one teacher that's hired by Prep KC that teaches our kids, Grandview kids, Center kids and, and East High School students. Um, so our four schools each send X number of students in the morning or the afternoon. So as that program grows, we then have to look at expanding and adding more additional staffing to be able to support those numbers.
So that's fifteen slots, is that, is that a slot for those four schools that are for us?
For us.
Okay, and we're having difficulty filling those slots?
Well, we went from five the first year to eleven this year, so we're getting closer. Um, this is just the second year. You know how word kind of gets out? Everyone's always a little bit afraid to be the first student to agree to leave campus, especially to go work at a place like Center or Cerner. Um, so we've been thinking about some unique recruitment that we can do and, um, our program lead at Ruskin is Mr. Hankins and he's got a pretty good list of students who are ready to apply, um, to be a part of this next fall group. So I feel pretty good about hitting the fifteen in the fall or getting really, really close to it.
Yeah, I, my only comment, um, is that it seems like a wonderful opportunity. And I, I would want and charge you guys with making sure that the district fills all fifteen of those spots each semester. That's critical. I mean, students being intimidated because of Cerner is not a good explanation to me. I think we need to be very diligent and work extremely hard in getting those kids in that program.
We agree, absolutely. That is the goal.
All right, so is that, uh, is that all the discussion? So we can go ahead and take a vote on this? At this time, the chair, I want to go, go ahead and vote. Vice President Reagan.
No.
Director Watry.
Yes.
Director Graves.
Yes.
Director Carter.
No.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Chair votes, aye, motion carries five to two.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I, I apologize. I've had a lot of diff, uh, technical difficulty, uh, tonight. But, you know, the remaining items under curriculum instruction or mostly renewals, again, uh, most of them technology that, you know, we would have taken to the EAC committee, you know, however it was canceled. So, uh, again, I apologize. I've had so many technical difficulties tonight, but, um, hopefully going forward, Ms. Franklin will be able to, uh, present these and I'll be able to assist and answer any questions if you have any.
I do apologize in advance. I have quite a few items here to go through. Um, this next item is related to the renewal of the Maraki Switch and Wireless Access Point Licensing. The Maraki Enterprise Licensing is required for all Cisco switches and Maraki Wireless AP licenses in the district. This licensing covers the Cisco Core switches and all district main data closets and all wireless access points for the district's wireless network. The licensing volume expires in July, two thousand and twenty and needs to be renewed. The purchase of enterprise-level support for all products and no cost replacement for the lifetime of the hardware products. Um, just very quickly, the background is that the Maraki Enterprise Licensing will be covered with category two E-rate funding remaining in the district's balance for the two thousand and twenty-one school year. This licensing is a three-year license, will expire in July, two thousand and twenty-three. The total cost is one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents for the three-year license. E-rate funding has been approved and will cover eighty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and thirteen cents. The district's portion will be thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. The total proposed expenditure for the renewal for the licensing for three years is thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-six cents, which would be paid from the technology budget. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of the Maraki Enterprise Licensing for three years from Converge One in the amount of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
At this time, the chair is seeking a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I saw a motion.
And second?
Second, this is Ms. Graves.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess we all have.
Do we vote?
Probably, probably best to do roll call with, uh, technology issues.
Well, I'll tell you. Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Chair votes, aye, motion carries seven to zero. How many of these do we have? Uh, Dr. Franklin?
I believe I have four more items. I'm just double checking on here. I have.
I'm just, I'm just checking and I don't have it right in front of me.
Okay, I have iReady, MorNet, Yellow Dog, OZNM, and then Technology Surplus. So there's actually five items.
Okay.
I'll try to move along pretty quick. Some of them are really short. This one, uh, renewal is related to iReady. So we did start iReady last year and this is our math and reading diagnostic software for grades K through eight. And iReady is our online assessment program used for diagnostic and informative math and reading assessments in grade through eight. The iReady assessment subscription includes adaptive diagnostic assessments, growth monitoring assessments, standards mastery assessments, and downloadable tools for instruction, lesson plans, powerful reporting and information management tools, and on-demand access to iReady central website for implementation and training resources. The licensing expires July one.
The licensing expires July 1, 2020. iReady replaced STAR Reading and STAR Math, if, as you can recall, as you may recall. The CNI team, along with the cadre of teachers, we investigated other products during the eighteen nineteen school year to replace STAR to provide a better alignment to the Missouri Assessment Program and the needs of the district. The iReady product was selected as the best replacement for formative math and reading diagnostic assessments in our district for the current nineteen twenty school year. The total proposed expenditure for the renewal is forty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents, which would be paid from the technology budget. The recommendation is the approval of the purchase of iReady in the amount of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents.
All right, thank you. How's it working out for, for us, Dr. Franklin, since this is our first year?
Well, unfortunately, as you, as you know, we did not get a chance to do our spring testing. But we did share previously that we did see gains in all grade levels from fall to winter. And just some informal feedback from teachers. They really felt like the assessments were more rigorous and really what our students needed to help them perform better on the assessment, the MAP assessment. We also had an opportunity to go into classrooms and watch teachers administer the, the assessment. And we watched students take the assessment and, and really felt positive about students able to navigate the questions. It really requires them to use more of the technology tools, similar to the MAP test. And so we feel really good about it and feel like we should continue to see growth and progress as kids get more familiar with using this platform.
So is there?
No, go ahead, President Briggs.
Is there any way that we can still test our students using the iReady platform that we have in this online learning experience?
Yeah, we, we've talked about that as a CNI team and as an executive leadership team, just really thinking of how do we make sure that we can create an atmosphere for giving and taking an assessment when we don't really have control of the environment? So if we push out the assessment to students, just really making sure that the student is able to take the assessment when it's pushed out, who's taking the assessment? I mean, you really just don't have a way to really monitor that. So right now, we're really just kind of working through some of those, those things. How can we give this assessment to all of our students, knowing that we really can't control those variables? It, it really is a challenge, I will tell you that. We could push it out. We just can't really control how valid the data would be. And we don't really have control over when students would take it or if students would take it. And so it's, it's really something we can do, and we are planning to give the assessment in the fall, regardless of what our platform looks like, if we're face-to-face or if we're virtual. And so that's really what we're planning for. How can we best, how can we best push out the assessment and get some really valid data back? And we don't really have control over the testing environment. It's a challenge.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you say that you made gains in all grade levels with iReady?
Yes, we did see gains in each grade level from fall to winter, and we've had some. Sure, sure.
I would.
I do, I do have one more question, Dr. Franklin.
Yes, ma'am.
If, if we're, if, 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 if it is challenging to disseminate the test to students in a online learning platform, how can we ensure that our kids benefited from the online learning experience?
Well, the challenge is not the platform. The challenge is, is the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic and students may or may not come back to school. And so that's really the, the deciding factor. We can administer the assessment, and we have, and the students are able to navigate the, the, the platform. So that's not the issue. The issue is whether or not we're going to start school and we're face-to-face with kids in front of us every day, or if we will have to figure out a way to. When you test students, obviously, it's typically a really controlled environment. So there's a teacher there watching and assisting if kids, you know, get stuck or if they're having trouble. When all of our students are at home, we're really relying on the parent to, to take care of that. I mean, putting the student on the device and, and making sure that they can take the assessment. So it's just a new situation that we find ourselves in right now. And to do that for all of our students K through eight, I, I can't say that we would yield the same results or data that we would if we had all of our kids at school and they were being tested in a controlled environment with all of the teachers there with them and providing the supports that they need. So it's, it's just really hard to say that they would, they would be the same type of situation. It's really not.
Okay.
President Briggs. Go ahead, President Briggs.
I don't have anything. I was just saying, I was seeking a motion.
Oh, well, real quick, because I want to just piggyback on it, and I want to see that data too, if you can send that to all the board members.
I can, and I just, I just want to remind you that this was shared during the education accountability meeting. As soon as those results came out, we did share those at that meeting, I believe that would have been maybe in February, because that's when it was shared with the rest of the district. And I do have, I do have kind of our CNI slides that show all of the scores.
Ms. Franklin, you beat me to the punch.
Oh, okay.
Well, because I was, I want to see that, but make a long story short, just looking at the data, trying, just looking at the curriculum and the things that you guys are setting up, trying to move our students into the right direction. It wouldn't look like it would add up. I'm looking at the years of accreditation that we haven't had and the progress of students in general, not moving the needle. We still have kids that are behind, and I don't know what type of measures or what kind of data are we not seeing that showing what you're adding up to, because it's not, nothing moves. So I'm just kind of, I'm just kind of not understanding. I understand you said that you got everything that you need, but at the same sense, moving the needle means we've been in a, without accreditation for almost seven years, maybe even longer than that. I might just be giving and taking. But just looking at our students, how we looked at all the data, and they're behind. And you guys are steadily giving some curriculum. I'm just trying to figure out if the curriculum is good for our students. Have we always looked at that? What are we doing to measure that? That's probably my question.
So I, I totally understand what you're saying, Vice President Reagan. And that's a big part of why, as a curriculum team, we've looked at different curriculum options. And that's why we did go with a different curriculum for the nineteen twenty school year for our primary grades. We wanted something that was more rigorous and more aligned to the standards. We needed an updated curriculum. And so again, that's a new change. In addition, this is also a new change. We just started with iReady for the nineteen twenty school year, and that's an upgrade from STAR that we were using. We just didn't really feel like we were getting the rigor and, and challenge from that, from that platform that we are with iReady. And I don't disagree with you that we, we do have work to do. And it is always our goal to meet that state standard so that we can have our accreditation. And that's really what we're striving towards. We're never not trying to do that. But as it relates to iReady and what we saw this year, I, I do have to share with you that we did see gains. Doesn't mean that we still don't have a lot of room to grow. We do. We had a few schools that met our district target, and so we're, we're making some small gains. And we hope to continue that with these new resources that we put in place. They're just fairly new, and so we're seeing some, some progress with them already, and we're, we're really pleased about that.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I like the motion that we approve the superintendent's recommendation of the purchase of iReady diagnostic software.
Right.
A second.
We've already had discussion.
My only comment with discussion. Or more or less, my, I have one question, and this goes out to other, this is not from Ms. Franklin, this is for board members. Who has talked to staff regarding iReady? Who has talked to principals, teachers, staff about their perception of iReady?
I have, I have Director Watry.
I have too.
What, what?
What are you seeking from that question?
The reason why I'm asking is because with the information that was presented in February, as well as the fact that iReady was just started, every, upon speaking to, to teachers from at least four or five different locate, different locations, as well as speaking to at least three principals, all, all of them had recommendations that iReady was helpful, that iReady was, they saw progress, and even so much as during COVID, have used iReady assignments to see growth in their students online. I understand the assessment aspect of it, but the assignments is be, is being utilized to ensure growth with the students that is taking place right now. The information that has been requested is provided in the, in the February Education Accountability Committee, as well as the, I think the following month of, the following month's open session meeting, in which we kind of discussed. Amongst that discussion, we also discussed how we could see progress. And that was kind of, I don't know, reiterated more than five times. So I, I would like to see, the reason why I made the motion and I'm making the statement is that I would like to see us approve this based on the fact that we do see strides in what's happening, even though we had an unprecedented event. But even if we were to take this away, we have nothing else in place to, to replace iReady that has even provided gains. Or even going backwards, we'd only be.
All right, thank you, Director Watry.
President Briggs, just very, very quickly, let me just say this to, to the board. I use iReady. iReady is good. My question was, and, and it always remain, I, I want to see our kids grow. So Mr. Watry, for, for you to, I don't know what you can kind of say, but that, that's not where I'm coming from.
Oh, it wasn't, it wasn't you, Doc, Director.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, and, and so I just want to be very clear that we are going to take a vote. I don't know what the comment was either, so, but we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Vice President Reagan.
That is a no for me.
Director Watry.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Sorry.
Director Carter?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know you could hear me. I want to sustain right now.
I, I do, oh, okay, all right. And so we have Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries with one, two, with four, yeses, one abstention, and one no.
President Briggs pointed water. Did you get Director Abrams' vote?
Director Abrams is not on the line at this time.
Okay.
That's why I said four, yeses, one abstention, and one no. That's a total of six.
Thank you. My next item is Mornet Internet Connectivity and Membership Licensing. The Mornet Internet Connectivity and Membership Licensing Contract is an annual contract. The current contract ends August 1, 2020. It needs to be renewed. Mornet Internet Connectivity and Membership Licensing Contract covers the district's of 5.0 gigabits internet circuit and 2.75 gigabits managed action fee, Zoom video communication services for district and building administration, the annual Mornet membership licensing, and the district DNS hosting service. The Mornet contract provides E-rate credit for the gigabit circuit. That is the only component of the contract, which is eratable. The new contract will expire August 2020. The total proposed expenditure is fifty-eight thousand, seventeen dollars and sixty-eight cents, which would be paid from the technology budget. The recommendation for the, from the interim superintendent is the renewal of the Mornet Internet Connectivity and Membership Licensing Contract for fifty-eight thousand, seventeen dollars and sixty-eight cents.
All right, at this time, the chair is seeking a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I saw a motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Oops, aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Chair, Chair votes aye. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next item is, I'm looking at the same one, the Yellow Dog Firewall Appliance Three-Year Threat Prevention Subscription and Support. And this is the district's current firewall appliance nearing an end-of-life status for support. The district's vendor, Yellow Dog, will provide the recommended replacement hardware and related three-year threat prevention subscription and support for the three-year period, July 2020 through June 2023. The total cost for the appliance subscription and support for over three years is carried by Yellow Dog Networks. The support licensing is a three-year license and will expire July 23. The total cost of the license is sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. It includes a seven thousand, two hundred and ten three-year license fee. The district annual cost would be twenty-four thousand over the three-year timeframe. At the end of the three-year timeframe, the district owns the appliance. The normal licensing for support only has been approximately twenty-two thousand annually. Thus, this opportunity to purchase the new device and include the subscription is at nearly annual no-cost increase to the district, while also replacing the appliance nearing end-of-life, which normally costs twenty-four thousand dollars alone. The total proposed expenditure for the purchase and the three-year threat prevention and support licensing for three years is seventy-two thousand. It will be twenty-four thousand annually for three years to be paid from the technology budget. The recommendation from the interim superintendent is the approval of the PA, PA five, five, fifty-two firewall appliance and three-year threat prevention subscription and premium support from Yellow Dog Networks in the amount of seventy-two thousand, which would be twenty-four thousand for the three-year licensing agreement.
I just have one question. What, what do we use Yellow Dog for again?
So this would just be our security for all of our internet usage. This would protect us from any type of hacker or any other types of threats. So it really is the firewall is the security for our internet.
Okay, thank you. At this time, the chair is seeking a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I saw a motion that we accept the recommendation, approval of the purchase of the PA 5220 Firewall appliance and the three-year threat prevention subscription and the premium support from Yellow Dog Networks in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars, at a twenty-four thousand dollar.
Discussion. See, no discussion. Vice President Reagan. Director Watry.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries six to zero. Mr. Abrams, you back?
I'm back, I'm back. Sorry about that.
Okay, seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. My next item is the renewal for our Behavior Intervention Support Team, which is BIST. This is the Behavior Intervention and Support Program currently utilized in grades K through eight. Annual Services Agreement amount for the 2021 school year is thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars for the elementary and middle school sites, grades K through eight. The total fund expenditure- The total fund expenditure for this service will be paid with Title I funds. And then just some background information about BIST. We started using BIST during the 1617 school year, and each of our schools that are participating, they receive training and support for teachers and administrators. The staff works with a certified BIST consultant. And as you may know, BIST is designed to help students decrease disruptive behavior, increase teaching time, and provide supports to parents, hopefully to facilitate some lifelong changes in students. Their philosophy is grounded in grace, giving responsibility and accountability to children in education, and focuses on early intervention, caring confrontation, developing protective plans, and outlasting the acting out. And just in short, some of the results that we've seen since we've utilized BIST is we have seen a decrease in out-of-school suspensions. We've seen an increase in students' ability to communicate about their feelings and ask for help when they need it. We've also seen that there's been more focused training for teachers and administrators on behavior intervention and prevention. So teachers are able to work as a collaborative team to support intervention for students. And then there's also the consultant that is there to provide support and additional onsite PD for each school. They also can do classroom observations and provide guidance in the development of individual student support plans. And so it is the recommendation of the interim superintendent to approve the annual renewal of BIST services for the 2021 school year.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I saw a motion.
There's.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I do have a, a question. I want to know, I used to be a BIST coordinator, and I've done research on, on BIST, and I don't know if, if the research supports that it doesn't work as well for people of color. So I don't know if you've ever looked at that data, um, Ms. Franklin.
Yeah, I, I will share with you, Director Graves, that we've, we've had some discussions about that, just, you know, being transparent with you. And there have been some conversations about how can we adjust some of the language, and teachers have done that so that it is more relatable to our students and how to respond to some of the structures. And so I will say that, you know, principals do have the latitude to relax those structures. Things that we, we talk about is really being able to relate to students and building relationships, because really, that's what's first. In order to get kids to do things that we really want them to do, they really do need to have a relationship with the teacher. And so we encourage teachers to really modify the language so that it meets the needs of our kids. And so it's something that we have talked about. And so luckily, because we do racial equity work in Hickman Mills, we're able to have those same conversations even with the consultants that work with us.
Hmm.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so with the certainty of school reentry of next school year, it's going to be online virtual platform in buildings, have they extended any information on how they plan to support if we are online?
Absolutely, Director Abrams. What we've done right now, because we are just now wrapping up the school year, so even as we've been working virtually due to the current school closures, they've already partnered with principals virtually, and they are still able to do staff meetings and professional development with teachers. They're also able to zoom into classrooms with individual students that they've been working with or providing additional support. And so right now, we're in the phase of really engaging all of our consultants that we work with. How are you able to modify your services to accommodate a virtual learning platform? Because right now, the way it stands, we, we will probably have to consider doing both. We don't necessarily know what that would look like. And so, and, and naturally, so all of our consultants have already thought about it. Once this happened, they started making plans for providing a virtual support. And so a lot of the trainings will be virtual. The consultants are still collaborating with principals virtually. Some of our principals have already met with their consultants to make plans for next year. And so they've been right there with us. I know the middle school just had a BIST vision team meeting virtually that they shared on Twitter. So the work is continuing, even though we're working virtually right now.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, the chair is seeking a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we accept the recommendation. The recommendation regarding the BIST program for the 2021 school year.
Point of order. Point of order, Madam President, we've already motioned a second.
Okay, well, I mean, it's a lot of words being exchanged, so I.
You know, you, you're right, but I'm just.
Oh, okay, Director, Director Wachry.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Abrams.
Aye.
Director, um, Carter.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan.
No.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six to one.
Thank you. And this is my last item. This is requested board action related to technology surplus items for May 2020. The Technology Department will be sending the items listed below out for district of, for surplus. These items will be removed from the inventory system once they are approved for surplus and removal from the district. And you can see the items listed there. Unusable towers, failed power supplies, broken monitors, and unusable off-model switches. The recommendation from the interim superintendent is the approval of the removal of the surplus items no longer serviceable to the school system and authorizes the appropriate disposal of these items.
At this time, the chair is seeking a motion to approve this.
Madam Chair.
All right.
I saw a motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Wachry.
Aye.
Director Abrams.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan. Chair votes aye, motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
Um, and I just wanted to, um, sorry, I don't want to take too much time here, but the, the policy, what was it? J, JGR dash one is mirrors this, uh, this code of conduct. So although we're approving the code of conduct, we would also change our policies. But I'm just making that note. So, um, just making board members aware.
Okay, you ready for me to?
Yes, sir.
What are we talking about? We haven't even put the, the, let me see. Go up my screen, okay, I see it, okay.
So this is the proposal for the Student Handbook, and more importantly, the Code of Conduct portion of the Student Handbook. Our current Student Handbook Code of Conduct was adopted in 2014 and has not been updated since to reflect some of the more current practices and considered best practices concerning discipline. You know, we did this when we adopted the MSBA policies. And again, you know, even though they're great policies, you know, they have not been adjusted. So in response to basically this.
Dr. Skinner, you're on mute.
Okay, did, did you hear anything I said?
The beginning portion of it.
I, I have to, I have never had so many technical difficulties in a meeting. So let's try this one, I, I'll kind of start back saying that, you know, the current handbook was adopted in 2014 and has not been updated to reflect some of the more current and considered best practices concerning discipline. Basically, this has been in existence, we adopted the MSBA policies, and, you know, we have been asked by the Board of Education to look at this. And so we did get a, a group of district and school-level administrators. We asked the president of the NEA, collaborated from other departments, and we looked at and revised the code of conduct. During this time, we researched different and best methodologies. New approaches such as restorative practices, tiered interventions are included in this proposed code, code of conduct. The proposed code is more inclusive of building relationships, but still holding students accountable while being less punitive and building more culture. Restorative practices are aimed at resolving conflict, which aids in eliminating repeat offenses, changing behaviors. A three-tiered approach based on restorative practices or justice keeps conflicts at tier one and two, and hopefully not getting to a tier three unless they're needed. It also provides much wraparound support and still empowers the administrators to perform the function of maintaining discipline. There will be a minimal amount of cost involved with doing some of the training and restorative practices at the beginning of the school year. The great thing about this is the students would be still held accountable, and students would grow more respectful of one another and build longer-lasting relationships, and it'll have a better student-friendly culture. And again, we did this with a lot of assistance, including Director Wachry, which I greatly appreciate. And, you know, we put together this, it took several months. We brought it to the EAC Committee in early March. So, you know, it's been viewed by the board members now for two and a half months. We've not had one question or concern from any board member. So, you know, I am silent. I'm hoping everybody's in agreement that it's a great product. And so I am recommending that we adopt the new code of conduct in the Student Handbook.
At this time, the chair is seeking a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I like the motion for the approval of, of the adoption of the new code of conduct in the Student Handbook, and that the policy, that policy JG dash R1 reflects the recommendations of the adoption that was made.
Second.
But I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I was second, I, I just wanted the president to recognize the second in that for, in that for discussion.
I thought Ms. Graves second, provided the second. And then Director Brooks, you had a question.
Yes, ma'am. Is this something that Dr. Skinner, that's been, apparently, we, we've not done this annually, but is this something that you would see us doing on an annual basis? Or, or is this as, that recommend we do it over what period of time?
I, I will tell you, you know, it has not been done on, basically, since we adopted the MSBA policies that have been here. It is something I think we need to review and determine if anything needs to be adjusted on an annual basis. We don't necessarily need to adjust it, we just need to kind of monitor where we are and make adjustments if needed.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Madam Chair, I mean, Madam President.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Brooks, to double down on what Dr. Skinner was saying, as far as the policy, Policy Committee is going to start annually reviewing all policies and putting on their agenda, so all policies, including this one, will have an annual review.
Good, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we are in voting. Uh, Director Wachry.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Abrams.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan. Chair votes aye, motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. I believe the next attorney, Fields Johnson, will look at the legal.
Yes, good evening, Board of Education.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, before you, you have two items coming under legal. The first is a first read on four MSBA policies. By way of background, these policies were reviewed by Dr. Cargill and I back in March. They came, these four policies came with all the other MSBA updates to the Policy Committee in April. The Policy Committee pulled these four out and wanted to spend a little bit more time with them. The April Policy Committee meeting, as I said, last meeting, the April Policy Committee meeting on April 7th, we went through in detail all of the MSBA updates. And so if anyone wants to see that and review the discussion on these particular policies, if you want to watch the Policy Committee meeting, each one of these policies were discussed in detail in April. As I said, the Policy Committee pulled these four out and wanted some additional time with them. They came back before the Policy Committee in May, and the Policy Committee is recommending them for first read to you all today. So they are Policy GCD, which is Professional Staff Recruiting and Hiring, Policy GCPB, which is Resignation of Professional Staff Members, Policy GDPB, which is Resignation of Support Staff Members, and Policy JOAP2, which is Student Records. So I encourage you to review those over the next 30 days, watch the Policy Committee meeting, bring any questions you have to me, or you can bring those to the Policy Committee meeting for June, and they'll come back for you for second read in June. Certainly, I'm available to answer any questions that anyone has on these this evening, or at any time between now and June when they come back up for second read. Are there any questions at this time on those policies?
I don't have any. We worked really hard on them. Director Wachry, Chair Wachry of Policy Led Discharge, and it was a lot of sweat equity put in this.
Yes, there were. And so you also have before you a second read on a series of MSBA policies that are in the agenda. I'm not going to read each one of those unless you ask me to, to do so. These are coming before you for second read today. Again, they were covered in detail in the Policy Committee meeting of April 7th. They were presented to you for first read last month, and they're now before you for second read. And so certainly, it would be appropriate for any one of you to make a motion to adopt any of these, any or all of these policies that are before you. Or to ask me any questions, I'm certainly available to answering.
At this time, the chair is seeking action on this item.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Wachry.
I saw a motion that, I'm sorry, my computers, there we go. Saw a motion for the adoption of the policies that have gone through the second reading, and that the policies that were presented by the attorney for first reading. Motion that they go on to second reading? I think that's my motion.
Yes.
Actually, they're at second reading now, so if you want to move to, for the adoption of those.
Okay, well, then, yes. I, I amend my, I amend my motion and ask for the adoption of all policies presented.
Second.
Discussion. Director Wachry.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Abrams.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan. Chair votes aye, motion carries six to zero.
And President Briggs, I hate to do it, but I'm going to have to.
I know, we need to go back to the bond. There's an item that's still unvoted for, so if we can go back to the bond, please.
Yes, Ms. Peyton, if you could pull back up the. Yes, Ms. Peyton, if you could pull back up the, let me see the document that.
The financials?
No, it's the item 6.2. I'm sorry, not 6.2. Where is the item? Oh, item 7.2, under new business, request action relative to the bond language. And if you could pull up the 2020 bond language document and then on page five of that document. So I asked you all to approve the bond language that was part of a resolution, the ballot language, the bond language that will actually go on the ballot, that's part of a resolution. I actually need to get your approval of the resolution. And so if you're looking at that page that's on the screen, there's a resolution titled, "A Resolution Calling for Special Election on a General Obligation Bond Question in Hickman Mills C1 School District of Jackson County, Missouri." In order to get your, your bond transcript approved by the state auditor, when it comes time to do that, you all will need to have this document, this excerpt of minutes of the meeting completed and approved by the Board Secretary. And so what I need is a motion approving the resolution as printed and bold in the middle of that, of that page, if someone can see that.
Can someone please read that resolution?
I can read the resolution. It's "A Resolution Calling a Special Election on the General Obligation Bond Question in Hickman Mills C1 School District of Jackson County, Missouri." And so I need someone to.
I would say move.
I was so second.
And discussion? All right, Director Watchery?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Director Carter?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Abram?
Aye.
Director, Vice President Reagan? Chair votes aye, motion carries six to zero.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Just reviewing, I wanted to check with Ms. Donna. Ms. Donna, did we vote on 7.1?
We have not voted on 7.1.
Okay.
Not vote on 6.2 under the consent items. We have not voted on either one.
So, Madam Chair, if I can, I don't, I don't mean to go back, but I just want us to keep this party going. Can I motion that we, can I motion for the approval of the April 2020 bills to be approved?
We did that already.
Okay, so I thought we did that one, but.
Yeah, we did that.
But did we approve, did we do the approval of the April 2020 financial report?
No, we did not. We did not receive, we went over it, Shelley. Ms. Wiltse explained it, but we did not receive a vote.
Okay.
But.
For 7.1.
7.1, so that's the one. Okay, so, Madam Chair, I like the motion that we approve, that we approve the April 2020 financial report.
Second.
I would have appreciated if there was an action that needed to be taken. It was stated at that time.
Yeah, me too. In honesty, I just got it.
Yeah, well, someone should have just stated it during that time. Director Watchery?
Why?
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Director Abram?
Aye.
Director Carter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six to zero.
I had nothing further under legal items.
We're on to discussion items.
Okay, sorry, I was waiting for you. Okay, so discussion item 8.1, which was, I brought this to, for discussion and wanted to kind of elaborate. So the discussion item is, 8.1 is racial equity, anti-racism, or anti-racist diversity training for board members, for board directors. What I would like to do, or I'd like to propose, or more or less seeking a motion for the board to seek out racial equity or diversity training primarily for the board members so that we can understand our district and the work this doing when it comes to these items, especially racial equity as this is a policy. And all the, and with knowing that the administration as well as staff is receiving diversity training, I feel like board directors in making decisions from, from the top to bottom and bottom to the top would also need some type of, would also need the same board diversity train as we're making decisions that policy affects procedure. And if, if we have a procedure with no, with policies that mirror that procedure, we want to make sure that those align and that board members also understand that alignment. So, go ahead.
This is, this is an item that definitely needs to be moved to a board retreat or a board discussion.
I agree.
Okay, and so that's where it needs to start at.
So with that being said, I understand this may be informational, but it'll be something that, that I, I guess I would like to see in our next board retreat as far as addressing.
That's, that sounds great. That's, I would say that this is something that needs to be moved and discussed with the board during a retreat time.
Okay, so.
Right. No action is needed at this time.
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. All right, so what is this next item? Does it see in? What's this item right here? I can't see it.
Desi, in MSBA recent updates.
Oh, yes. You have some updates for us?
You had asked me to put that in there due to the document that I included in the week notes last week, the MSBA document that's kind of floated around. It contains a plethora of ideas and possibilities and I know that it had been causing some discussion in public. So, you know, just want to kind of give you a chance to ask any questions about it. Again, at this point, truly what it is, is just a lot of ideas talking about, you know, half the school district stays home, the other half goes to school, you know, such as an A and B day. They talked about a multi-year tracking. There are a lot of possibilities that they've discussed will not necessarily work for us. Desi really has not put forth any guidance as well right now. They're, I think, waiting. I spoke with them yesterday as a follow-up to a previous conversation. Everybody is kind of in a holding pattern right now. As we've opened up the public, I think everyone needs about three to four weeks to see what happens during this time, to see if there is an increase. The MSBA document basically says that before schools can resume in person, they need to see 28 days of days going down as far as the number of cases that are being reported. So basically, they're just giving some guidance on different things that may help, you know, such as signage. Again, it's almost 100-page document that, you know, was included. So it's just, you know, in case you have any questions whatsoever, you know, I'll be happy to discuss any questions you have. But really, I think at this point, three to four weeks of waiting to determine what is going to be needed is really what we need. We are going to be getting a task force together at some point to talk about what next school year will look like, especially in the light of if, for some reason, we were not able to report back in person, that, you know, we do need to report virtually. So again, I think a lot of possibilities. I think we're a little early, but I definitely think we are asking a lot of questions, gathering answers to those questions so that we'll be able to make an informed decision when the time comes.
Thank you. I think we just need to go back there one more time. I'm so sorry. My soul won't let it go. I think it's important, Board of Education, that we pay very close attention to what is transpiring as it relates to the COVID-19 and how it will impact our school district. Weekly updates, I will be requesting weekly updates and I will hope moving forward that someone else will request weekly updates regarding where our district is as it relates to COVID-19, our students starting back to school. So this is something that should stay on our radar every single day moving forward.
And it is. Rest assured that it is something we discuss every day. As we wrap up, as you know, tomorrow is the last day of this school year, you know, we are doing our summer school virtually in June. Again, when we had the option to bring them back, safety of students and staff is going to be the number one concern. But rest assured, this is something that we discuss on a daily basis.
Thank you, Dr. Skinner. You're right.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to backtrack, but I did need, I did mean to seek a motion for the diversity training. And I'll, I'll explain in the motion and whoever seconds, if it comes up in discussion, I'll discuss it even further. But I'm seeking a motion to approve the administration seeking out options and a schedule for diversity training of the Board of Education for the following year.
I don't see that stated.
No, I'm, I'm motioning for that right now based on the topic, the discussion item that was put up.
You need a second?
I do.
Can you repeat that motion, please?
Yes, I'm, I'm motioning, I, I motion for the approval, for the board to approve administration to seek out options and a schedule for diversity training for Hickman Mills Board of Education on an annual basis.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, you know, we'll have a new board coming on and so that, that, that's something that would be good to.
Yeah, that's why I suggested that it moves, moves to the board.
Which is the reason why I made.
All right, so let's go ahead and vote. Vice President Reagan? Director Watchery?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Director Carter?
No.
Director Abram?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five to one. Where are we at on this agenda?
Committee reports.
There shouldn't be any committee reports because I don't think the committee met this month.
No, they're not.
All right, items for future meeting, meeting dates?
The Policy Committee and the Facilities Committee met in May.
Yes, we did meet.
Oh, the policy, yes, I was on that, yeah.
So.
What updates do we have?
But I'll let Mr. Brooks do, do the finance committee.
The Finance Committee did not meet in.
In May. So, policy, the policy met in May and most of the discussion that we had, the actions that we've taken here as far as the MSBA updates came from that Policy Committee meeting and that's really all that, that I have to report.
I believe Facilities met in May as well, right?
We did.
Is someone there to give a report?
Yeah, we, we met on a variety of topics, a lot of it related to the bond. We had a presentation by Justin Miller, or Justin Durham of Hollis and Miller. We talked a lot about, you know, the cameras, lights, some of the football field. We talked about sponsorships that are going on for, you know, the sponsorships for the school district that are going on. And gates at the schools, we talked about those things as well as part of the security package. So really talked a lot about the bond, some of the intricacies that go along within that bond.
May I interrupt? We did discuss Mr. Weekly about our facilities trucks. That also was a conversation that came up, which I'm still waiting on a report from you this week.
Yeah, and we had, yeah, I'll let Mr., I'll let Dr. Skinner provide that for you.
What would you like?
Well.
Trucks that were, that were taken last year. I wanted to update on have they been recovered or what's the status on it? And I asked for that report this week.
Yeah, they still have not been recovered. Sergeant Dyke should check for self-control. They have no new leads at this time.
Okay, but that's, I think me, I had a different story, so I can touch base on what I've, what I've gotten, the word I have received today. So me and you can touch bases on that, Mr. Weekly, if you would like to, if I can send email or I can call you if you'd like.
Sure, sure.
All right. Moving on to future agenda items. Policy Committee meeting is June 2nd.
Madam President.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the Policy Committee. Maybe this is an old item that was sent, but I, I saw something referenced to, there was certainly been a policy about items being on the agenda and the procedure for getting them on the agenda. Was that something that I just stole back in the, in the last decade or was that something new that came up?
As to as to. No, there, no, there is a, there is a mechanism to getting things on the policy that need to be brought to the Board of Education and voted on and then sent to the policy, to the, to specific committees depending on the topics.
Madam President.
Okay, I got 1% left on my phone, I promise you, and I am not nowhere near a charger.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're gonna, you're gonna lose me.
Okay, try to be quick. 2018, there was a policy, there was committee guidelines placed where you would have to bring it to the board or, or when it comes to future items or your report, provide what you would like to discuss in the, in the following meeting. As right now, all, all policy, all committee meetings have nothing on their agenda unless we present them here now and vote on them to be on those agendas.
Okay. I'll bring this up at, at the next, I'll bring this to the policy meeting next time. I have a couple more questions.
All right, thank you. All right, moving to future agenda items, and I want you to lose me. Policy Committee meeting is June 2nd, 2020 at 5:30. Facilities Committee meeting is June 4th, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. Educated Accountability Committee meeting is June 8, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. Finance Committee meeting is June 9, 2020 at 5:30 p.m. Regular Session Board meeting and Board Reorganization meeting is, is June 11, 2020 at 6:30 p.m. If there's no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned.